What we're going to do here is this is going to be a little bit different than some of the other candidate forums. I've been on this election season. This is really a deep dive into District One. We have a good solid hour to be with you folks because you're, you know, one of you is going to elect represent us for the next, what is it, four years? So we, you know, as members of the neighborhood, we really have an interest in making sure that you answer our questions and we want to make an educated decision here. And so we're going to spend the good majority of this hour talking about issues affecting our neighborhood. And so what we'll do is we'll have you each do a two-minute opening statement. I'm sure you're familiar with this. And then we have a whole series of questions that we've gotten from the community. We had about 40 people, 40 folks give input on our survey and ask a bunch of questions. And so we tried to lump them in certain categories and, you know, combine them together so that we're covering all the topics. And then we'll do like a minute and a half for a response, I think is what we're going to do. Unless we find that that's like too long, we might adjust, but I think that's what we're going to try to do. And Eric, if you could raise your hand, Eric, so they can see you. Did you make your little signs? Look at this. So those are your signs saying if 30 seconds, 15, look at that. And then stop and then a gong goes off and then a hook comes and yanks you offstage. So that's what's going to happen. So what's that? That's not a stop thing. That's.
If the poetry comes up, you've gone way too far.
Okay, good. So I will go ahead and introduce the leaders of this effort. This has been a collaboration of the Longfellow Community Association, the LCA, and the Golden Gate Community Association and Oakland Neighborhoods for Equity in Santa Fe. So we've got Santa Fe, Longfellow, and Golden Gate here. And just to give a little shout out to the other folks here that have helped with this. Angela, can you wave your hand or can everybody see Angela Janino from Golden Gate? And can we get a little shout out? Kathy, where are you Kathy? There she is. That's a sky. That's her ceiling anyway. There we go. There's Kathy. So we met on this and we, we've had several planning meetings to figure out the best format over the last few months. So this is a really cool collaboration and we hope that the candidates appreciate it because hopefully it's like a nice, you know, lumping you all together. So that you don't have to do three of these, you know, you're just doing one for this North Oakland set of neighborhoods. Oh, hello, the host has spotlighted me. Okay, great. And I just wanted to introduce the board members of the LCA who are also have been helping out here. Eric is our timekeeper. You already met Eric. Show us your stop thing again. There's Eric. Eric was the Longfellow Community Association president for many years. Thank you for your service. Scott Wintner, if you could wave to everybody. Scott is also on the LCA board and he is responsible for the newsletter. If you get our amazing newsletter, it's Scott that writes it. He's so good. Thank you, Scott. You do a great job. And if you're not on the LCA newsletter, I encourage you to sign up. We can put the link in the chat. And Donna, is Donna around? Do I see? There she is. You might have to scroll through to see her. She's waving. Hey Donna. Donna's also been on the board for a number of years, serving her community. Thank you for your service. And Toby, where's Toby? Is she around? She has a child. Toby, is your baby available?
I'm here. Baby's not available.
All right.
But it's quiet around here, so.
Good. So yeah, so that's the Longfellow Board and that is Golden Gate and Santa Fe Neighborhoods.
Don't forget Trina, our newest.
Oh my gosh, our newest board member. How could I forget our newest board member? I'm so sorry. Trina, if you could wave, I don't see you. I'm scrolling through. Is Trina on? Is she on? Well, anyway, Trina owns Yoga Love Studios. So if you ever are looking for a locally owned yoga studio, it's right here on, what is it, Market and like 38th, Trina's Yoga Studio. So I encourage you to check it out.
Market and Epgar.
Market and Epgar. Awesome. And Trina just joined the Longfellow Board. So we are excited to have her. All right. I think we should go forward. The, what we're going to do here is Kathy and I are going to alternate asking questions. And we're going to give you, you know, first we're going to do the opening statements, but then we're going to do a minute and a half per response. So that's how that's going to work. So why don't we go ahead and get started? And you can take me off spotlight because I don't want to be spotlighted. Scott, Scott's driving the Zoom, by the way. If you have questions about Zoom, Scott is in charge. Great.
So I have a question.
Yeah? I think you're muted.
Yeah, you're muted Kathy.
Kathy, now you're.
I thought that the candidate statements were going to be one minute each and now it looks like they're two minutes.
I thought we should give them two minutes to kind of state their whole spiel and then shorten it to a minute and a half for answer. But I'm flexible. Do you guys have a preference candidates? Do you want a minute or two?
That's kind of long.
I think you're really feeding back there Kathy. Oh, you guys are together. I get it. That's why. You probably have both computers on. Okay. Why don't we compromise and do a minute and a half opening statement? How does that sound? Okay, great. Why don't we start with our council member Dan Kulp? Sorry, you're, you're, you're in the office and you, you go, you get to go first. And we need to unmute Dan. I don't know if you can do that yourself.
Yes, there you go. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you to the three organizations, wonderful neighborhood associations, community associations for, for hosting this important event. I really appreciate it very much. And of course, you know, this is a short period of time that we have together for this particular event. So anybody, you know, wants to send follow-up questions, please don't hesitate to do that to any of us afterwards. As maybe you know, I've worked hard over the past seven and a half years to attempt to solve many problems and challenges, big and small, throughout our district and throughout the citywide. For my entire adult life, I was a public interest, social justice, environmental justice advocate and community activist. I came into a council member, came into being a council member as a public interest advocate and I didn't stop that once I, once I got elected. I'm proud of my record on many, a range of issues, but there's more work to do. Whether it's securing more funding for affordable housing, protecting our tenants from displacement, being out there in front of police accountability, working with the coalition, on climate justice, clean energy, pedestrian safety, public libraries and so much more. But I know there's more to do and some of those things are big citywide challenges that are intensive and all encompassing. And with COVID on top of that, and others are more district or neighborhood or even, you know, block specific. For example, a lot of pedestrian safety issues around Lowell or on West Street or on Telegraph Avenue, all sorts of parts of your part of the district or the entire district. And so we always, we always have to find time to make sure that we could focus on the little things as so-called little things. They're not really little, they're very important, but the smaller things I should say. While we also focus on the citywide and regional wide challenges. And that's what I try to do. And so whether it's pedestrian safety, safe routes to schools or other infrastructure that we need to make our streets, our sidewalks, our bike lanes safer and more prevalent. Road diets, a strong supportive road diets, speed bumps as needed, we need to do more of that. And part of our challenge is, you know, I constantly, every week I'm nudging and nudging, pushing and pushing our Department of Transportation, other departments to do more of this and do more of that. Sometimes that has success and sometimes it doesn't. And that's why I keep on working at it. And so does my staff. My staff works very hard and they are very dedicated to helping as many people as possible. So I will continue to work hard, be a strong advocate for affordable housing, for renter protection, for reducing crime. We have crime all throughout the city, including parts of North Oakland, and we can't give up on that. While, even while we are reimagining public safety, we can't give up on reducing crime overall. Those must go hand in hand and I think they can go hand in hand. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay, great. So why don't we do two minutes? It sounds like I'm, you went over. I don't know if you saw the sign. It's okay. There's a lot.
I do not see it.
There's a lot going on. So let's make sure that you can, everybody can see Eric's sign. I don't know, you might have to like, make sure your screen, you scrolled over to him or.
Gallery, if you're speaking, just go to gallery.
I see him.
Okay, okay. So we'll do two and that's, this is your big blast of all the stuff you want to do. There's a lot going on. I know two minutes is tough. So why don't we go to Try, if that's all right? And you're muted.
Yeah.
And the clock is ticking.
Okay, thank you. Hey guys, my name is Try No. I'm running for Oakland City Council in District One. That's why you guys invited me. I'm talking from my rent-controlled room in Longfellow right now and hopefully my roommate doesn't interrupt me. I am focused on creating, creating an Oakland of love and belonging through a government that represents, that includes every voice. My focus is on solving homelessness, on preserving our diversity as a community by creating housing for everyone. And on reimagining public safety so that it addresses the root issues, not just being punitive. And how we're going to do this is we're going to reimagine government, increasing participation like you did on this meeting. And I want to thank you so much for doing that, bringing us together so that collectively we have all the resources to bear on the issue of homelessness and creating affordable housing. I'm accepting a maximum of $35 per person so that you can trust that I represent every single person in our community. And I also will create an online voting platform so that every resident gets to participate in our government. So that we build wider support for the, the, the policies that will address the problems we want to fix. And a special request tonight is the last night for a donation so that this campaign qualifies for public financing. And I would love your help with that. I was born in a refugee camp on the border of Thailand and Cambodia, came to the US when I was two. I grew up on welfare, taking care of a brother with cerebral palsy. I grew up in inner-city Philadelphia and Atlanta. Went to public schools all my life and then eventually got degrees from MIT and a PhD from Johns Hopkins. And I worked at Tesla for four years. I am committed to making the problem of homelessness my problem and solving this. That is my number one focus because that is the canary in the coal mine, I believe, for our community.
Great. Thank you so much, Try. And our final two-minute pitch comes from Steph Dominguez Walton. Thank you, Steph. Take it away.
Thank you all for having me. It's great to see a lot of familiar faces and it's really great to be here. I love this community. I love District One for its diversity and for all that it has to offer. I've been here with my family for the past 15 and a half years. It's where I'm raising my kids. My heart is here. I've never, I, I grew up with little means. My parents were young, they struggled. But they were able to work hard and get me to a place where I was on a path for a really decent education and that just sort of set me. I look around in this community and over the past 15 years, I see unprecedented challenges with housing and our lack of housing and our homeless population, which has increased by 50% in the last two years. And I am talking for the last 18 months with members of this community. Asking them, what is, what are your priorities? What would you like to see changed? How would you like me to respond? How can I listen to you and how can we collaborate together to make this community better and stronger? And, and create opportunity for everyone to have, to thrive. I, I, I come from over 25 years in radio and television for most of my career. I, I was a successful saleswoman in a male-dominated industry and a woman of color where there aren't many of us. I've had a lot of success in Oakland too, working in this community and was responsible for, thanks Eric, reinstating a separate program at a Title I school that was subsequently reinstated district-wide. I work hard for people and with people. I'm, you know, I'm a volunteer, but I can take that work ethic and my ability to collaborate, to work towards a common goal and do a lot of really great work at the city council. And I would love to have your support to get there. Thank you so much.
Great. Perfectly on time.
Thank you.
So now we will go into the questions and Kathy is going to kick us off, excuse me, with the first question. And I made a mistake. I didn't give us time to introduce our organizations. So why don't you do that Kathy, as you are about to launch into some questions? Maybe you can speak a little bit about Santa Fe and the organization.
Yeah, so my name is Kathy Leonard. As most of you know, I'm an Oakland native and my family has been in the Santa Fe neighborhood for over 60 years. I recently founded an organization called Oakland Neighborhoods for Equity where we work on policy regarding the homeless, regarding police accountability and, and other things that affect our local neighbors in the three neighborhoods, but also citywide. One, the Oakland Neighborhoods for Equity is a, Golden Gate Community Association is our fiscal sponsor. So we work hand in hand on some of these projects. So should we move to Angela now, since we're doing introductions? Let's change scenes.
You can stay there. Hi, sorry about that. We're doing musical chairs on this end. I am the president, Angela Janino. I'm the president of the Golden Gate Community Association. And GGA, formerly known as the San Pablo Avenue Golden Gate Improvement Association, has been working for the community and supporting the community since 1985. And we have continually been working toward public safety issues, crime prevention and economic development for our commercial corridors like San Pablo Corridor. And our focus, we have had a big focus on the Lowell Street Corridor because of the blight and code violations and the truck issues that degrade our quality of life issues. So those are the big issues that we're working on. But we've been around for a long time and I think we're going to be here for a long time. So I'm happy to be part of this.
Okay, so now we'll launch into the questions. So the first question has to do with police accountability. Ballot measure S1 grants the independent police commission and the community police review agency the right to hire their own attorney and inspector general to conduct independent investigations into police misconduct. If voters approve measure S1, what will you do to ensure the commission's rulings are updated by OPD and the city?
And who is it for?
And so the first person I'd like to answer the question is Stephanie. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Well, I, some encouraging news, I'm sure you're all aware. I know you're aware Kathy. The OPOA just endorsed measure S1. That is, that is like a glimmer of hope, if you ask me. And I think we need to be encouraged. First of all, we need to provide the police commission with every possible resource they need in order to do their job to provide the oversight that is critically needed for the police department. And so I support, I support that. If, if the police are not accountable to the, to the, the group of folks who were voted in to make them accountable, then we have a problem. And as a city council member, I would work to ensure that the police are being accountable to the police commission. I mean, so the whole purpose of it. I think that the rulings need to be enforceable. And so if the commission rules that misconduct happened, that it needs to be enforced. I mean, we have to work and, and we have to, as a council, work with the commission and with the community to make sure that the commission is truly empowered to make sure that we're all safe. What's, what's been going on has not been working. That, you know, George Floyd's murder brought this to light and a lot of new people joined the conversation. But this has been going on for generations and we need to make sure that the proper oversight is, I'm stopping. Thank you Eric, sorry.
Thank you very much. Councilperson called. Would you like me to restate the question or are you clear? You, can you unmute?
Yeah, if you could restate it, that'd be great. Appreciate it.
If voters approve measure S1, what will you do to ensure the commission's rulings and policies are upheld by the Oakland Police Department and by the city, meaning City Hall?
Right. Thank you for that Kathy. Appreciate it. I appreciate your participation in the Coalition for Police Accountability over the number of years and now. Actually, the inspector general, that was the provision. We tried to get into the charter back in 2016. I had it in a draft. I thought it was very important. A new best practice actually around the country. But that got pushed out in the process unfortunately over my objection. We brought it back by ordinance. It couldn't happen. So now it's back in the charter for this year. And once, and once that person's hired, it's going to be a godsend for the commission. That person will be in charge of looking at patterns and practices and policies to, to help advise the commission, assist the commission in looking at new policies and procedures that will help reform the police department, a real professional staff. That's what the commission needed and this will make it happen. So I fully support that. In terms of discipline and misconduct, yes, OPOA is supporting this measure. That's because both in 2016, there were a couple provisions and 2020, at least one provision that they didn't like and they pushed out during the meet and confer process, again, over my objection. But nevertheless, it's still a strong measure. Two, four years ago, it's still a strong measure this year. And it's, we need to pass it and move forward. And absolutely, if there are new policies put forward by the police commission, we need to make sure that the, the council supports that effort and as we're allowed, as we're supposed to do. And get those enforced by the new, by the new, the current and the new police chief. And make sure the community police review agency and the commissions itself will uphold discipline and not let the police chief get in the way of true discipline that's needed. Sometimes they'll agree and sometimes they won't.
Thank you. And Try.
My approach to holding OPD accountable is similar to my approach to holding government accountable, which is increasing participation and transparency. We must, all the decisions made by the commission must be, must be distributed and transparent and widespread. There's no way for any single politician to have the political power to hold OPD accountable just single-handedly. We, we need the community to back us up. I support the ballot measure to strengthen the commission. Obviously, if they're no, if they don't have power, then accountability doesn't exist. I would support directly electing the commissioners so that there's, they are more connected to the people. So that people are invested in, in the work that the commission does. I believe that they should be, it should be a full-time job. Also, I, nine out of 10 council, nine out of 10 residents that I've talked to want a reimagination of OPD. And for us to bring them, for us to increase engagement and participation, we have to respect that desire. And I would refocus OPD's mandate again on prevention instead of just punitive actions. We need to limit overtime pay because officers working 13-hour shifts are not safe for the community. And reduce the use of armed police as much as possible.
Thank you very much. Okay, the second question has to do with defunding the Oakland Police Department, which I believe is a misnomer, but anyway. So mobile assistance communities responders of Oakland or MACRO, is the city-approved one-year pilot, I think it's a six-month pilot actually, that redirects $1.3 million of the Oakland Police Department's budget for dispatching civilian workers who will address mental health, non-criminal and non-violent emergency calls to service in, to neighborhoods in parts of East Oakland, West Oakland and downtown Oakland. Do you agree with the Urban Strategies Council report that MACRO's budget should be increased to $3 million in order to adequately provide the community workers with a living wage, proper training, oversight and administration? Thank you. And we'll start with Try.
I support shoring up non-unarmed, unarmed services. The $3 million figure, I, I need to look more into it, but yes, I support pouring more funding into supportive services like MACRO. What, what is the other? Is there, am I missing anything here? Let me see.
Do you agree with there? So there's a report out by the, by the Urban Strategies Council, which gives recommendations. It says for the implementation plan for MACRO. So that's where the budget figure came in. So what it's saying is the city allotted $1.3. The recommendation is 3.9. Will you support the 3.9 million so that we can adequately get MACRO off the ground?
Yes, if it's necessary in order to implement the program, yeah, I would support it. Yeah, I, I support shifting resources from armed policing to supportive services like MACRO. I, not, I, I do want, you know, there are so many competing strategy, competing interests. And I, I want to evaluate it. I want to review it. I want to, in making that decision, I want the community to, to be aware of what's going on as well. But if, it sounds like, yeah, it sounds like a reasonable thing.
Thank you. Candidate Walton.
Yes. Yes, I would support it. I mean, a living wage, it's, it's critical. How could we ask someone to take a job for a pilot program that the city voted to approve and, and in-state and not offer them a living wage? So yeah, we'll find it. We got to find that money to make our community safer.
And councilperson call.
Thank you for that question. Actually, it was 1.3 and then we upped it to 1.8 in the, in budget. So we have to up it a little bit. And so because it's not, because it is not a full calendar, a full fiscal year, the belief was that's enough for the portion of this fiscal year. But when, but next year, when it's a full fiscal year, it really would need a more, more robust amount of money. So I agree, I agree with the essence of what you're saying. A full fiscal year requires not doing it on the cheap. And in fact, what I, what I hope we get to, and this is what we have to get to, this is a pilot, as you correctly pointed out. We need to go, we have to go beyond the pilot. Now let's do the pilot, evaluate it, let's, let's fix the bugs. If there are bugs, there always going to be some bugs, maybe do something new, that's fine. Let's fix those and then work to grow that because mental health calls are not the only category of 911 or non-emergency calls for service that OPD currently deals with that do not have to be done by OPD. That's why I asked for and should be coming to us next month, a full report as to the volume, as to the categories and the volume of 911 and non-emergency calls over the past few years that go to OPD. And then decide over the next number of months with the reimagining task force, decide which categories should we try in addition to MACRO, in addition to mental health, to move into this civilian first responder authority that, over time. And we have to build that up. And as we build that up, we could build down to some extent the OPD funding and move part of that funding to this civilian agency. So I fully support that. The timing is very, is important. Let's not do something too quickly, but let's get it right. I don't want a backlash. I don't want to do something too quickly and get a big backlash. That will hurt. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, so I'm going to turn the reins over to Jane to ask the next, next question. Thank you very much for your responses.
Thank you so much. Okay, our next question is about housing. The moratorium on evictions during COVID has saved many newly unemployed renters from experiencing homelessness. But when the moratorium ends, those same renters must start paying full rent and all past due rent. Failure to do so can result in ruined credit, possible eviction and becoming unhoused. What is your thought on how we can help keep tenants, especially tenants of color, safe during the eviction wave that lies ahead of us this year? Oh, who should we start with? Pardon?
Candidate Walton.
Great.
So we have got to provide assistance to people who have been unable to pay rent while they're unemployed during a pandemic and an economic downturn that is grave. We are going to have to lean, we're, the state and the feds are going to have to help us out. And, and I also think, you know, if, if banks aren't willing to forgive, you know, I don't know. I honestly don't know how the housing situation will improve if we can't provide aid on a federal or a state level to some of those housing providers as well. I also think, you know, part of reimagining and reallocating policing, you know, some of that money should go to helping Oaklanders out who are struggling now. And, you know, this pandemic is not over. Rent has, is not yet due. And it is going to, things are going to get worse come early next year. And so we've got to be prepared to, to take those funds immediately and reallocate them into helping our, our residents stay here and stay housed.
Great. Thank you. Why don't we go to councilmember called?
Thank you. Appreciate the question. Very timely, obviously. I'm very proud to be one of the, the co-authors of our city's eviction moratorium, which we had to kind of re-up a couple of different times and make sure it doesn't get weakened. And I'm very proud to have done that with councilmember Bass who endorsed me. So, and if we need to extend that even, even farther, that's. So, and if we need to extend that even, even farther, that's fine, let's do that. Both the city and the county, we've made sure that any unpaid rent, after the emergency is over, any unpaid rent due to the COVID crisis could not be used as a cause for eviction. You would still owe the rent, and you might get bad credit, you might have to pay, you know, installment plans, but you couldn't be evicted. That's, that's, that's absolutely key. We, we cannot have mass evictions. Here's the challenge, we also don't want to have a new foreclosure crisis. The last recession, we had a, the whole country had, but certainly here in Oakland, we had a huge foreclosure crisis where small property owners, single-family homeowners, small building owners, lost their building because of the entire, you know, the whole Wall Street ridiculousness. And so, we can't let that happen. So we have to work with the state and the feds to make sure, whatever laws are needed, whatever funding is needed, that we make sure that while we protect our renters, we also protect, to the extent we can, the smaller or more lower to moderate income, lower to middle income, property owners who might be at risk foreclosure. We cannot have a foreclosure crisis. That's one of our most important goals as we come out of this crisis, hopefully, pretty soon.
Great, thank you. Thanks for keeping to the time, everybody, really appreciate it. And thanks, Eric, for timekeeping, super helpful. And why don't we go to Try?
You guys are picking really easy questions.
Sorry.
Housing is a right. We, we must move toward, every decision will be evaluated against that metric. Are we keeping everyone housed? And we need to increase our resources. And on that, my position is that we need to support both tenants and property owners in solving this collective problem. I do not support demonizing people. I think there are bad people in every batch, but we must work holistically with the entire community to ensure that we utilize all the resources we have. We need to protect tenants from illegal evictions, we need to find a way to disperse risk from landlords so that they feel comfortable, willing to continue to rent out their property. We need to ask banks to sacrifice, because yes, there will, there will be a, a time where land, property owners can't pay their mortgage, and that's where we need to go. And we will reach out to the state and the federal level in order, in order to do that. Also, we need to spur small businesses so that the economy of Oakland continues to be strong. And on that topic, that's also connected to homelessness policy, because homelessness is impacting our small businesses as well, and we need to be prepared to, always, we need to look out for the most vulnerable of us, and all these things are interconnected. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy, I think you want to take this next one?
Okay, I was trying to unmute myself. We got cooks over here. Okay, so, thank you all for your responses so far. So the next question has to do with deeply affordable housing. This question, as were all of the questions posed by the neighbors from Santa Fe, Golden Gate, and Longfellow, and this one of homelessness deeply touches our three communities, and I'm happy to say that our communities are very involved and very concerned about this issue. So the question is, and there is, you know, a number of questions, how can we address our homeless population issues with dignity? How will you support Oakland's homeless encampments and the neighbors that surround them? People are concerned about blight in general and around the homeless camps specifically. Why has nothing been done to assist the homeless encampments and clean up the trash, which impacts not only them, but impacts the neighbors that are around them too? It's a quality of life issue for all of us, those who are unhoused and those who are housed. So Try, if you can, who answered, who answered the last question? Oh, Try, we're with you, Try, on this question, and I'm, I'm more than happy to repeat it.
Yeah, thank you so much, Kathy. Why hasn't effective actions been taken? Because we don't have a local government that represents the voices of the community, and so the government isn't accountable to the people. It's not, houseless residents aren't attending council meetings. Many of us don't even know who our council member is. That is the root of the problem. And in order for us to solve this problem, we must restore trust, and that's why I have my $35 limit, and that's why I'm committed to creating an online voting platform to broaden political support to address these issues. So to answer that question, that is why. And that's what differentiates me from the other candidates who are going to say exactly this, you know, we have common ideas around solving these, these issues, accountability is where the difference lies. I am proud to say that I am endorsed by former Black Panther Auntie Frances of the Self-Help Program. I'm so grateful for her love and her, her, you know, in her space, she creates a sense of belonging for everyone. Regarding specific policies on homelessness, you can go to my website, I have a PowerPoint where there's a four-step program. We need to, we need to support those living in encampments so that they are, can stay in one place, and then we need to funnel resources from nonprofit and private organizations to support them proactively. We need to interview every single houseless resident, there's about 5,000 of them, I'm committed to knowing exactly what is going on with each of them. And I would love to talk more about it, but my time is up.
Candidate Walton.
Yeah, so, the problem is, you know, in the last two years, homelessness has increased by 50%. This is a, a figure that most of us know. That, whatever's, whatever's in place right now is not working. Whatever's, whatever plans are in place, there, action needs to be taken to implement something different to make sure that, I drive past the giraffe encampment every single day, excuse me, every single Monday and Thursday, and I watch the blight increase. Handwashing stations and, and porta-potties are essential to, to survival and, and, you know, dignity among some of our unhoused, but it's not enough. And so we need to figure out a plan to find some money, and I've started, I've talked to some people here on this call, about sourcing philanthropic donations to get people off the street immediately and into some of these vacant hotels and motels in the district and throughout the city. These folks need wraparound services, they need to be cared for from street into housing with crisis management, with meals, with addiction services, with health and well-being, job training, and this, this is something that we have to make a priority. And, you know, I'll report back if I have, and when I have success, putting some funds together to make this happen, and I'm talking to people in the community who run nonprofits to try to make this happen. Thanks, Eric, sorry.
Thank you. Councilperson call.
Thanks, thanks for, for that question. Yes, obviously, this is very challenging, and we have a large homeless population, as many cities do up and down the west coast, including here in the Bay Area. And, and the solution, while we, as the city of Oakland, are part of that solution, we cannot do it all, I think we know that. The county already goes out and talks with many, I won't say all, but many of the homeless residents on a, on a fairly, somewhat regular basis, see which ones need some assistance, and try to help them best they can. It's not perfect, it's not enough. I, I've been pushing with some success, but not enough, to get more money in the budget to do more regular trash pickups at the homeless, the larger homeless encampments, over 50 of them, to get more regular service, servicing of the porta-potties in the homeless encampments, and to do a more regular deep cleaning of the homeless encampments, not a closure, but a cleaning of the homeless encampments, to make sure people are not living in squalor. The problem is that we could do more money for all of those things, to the point where the encampments look well-managed, clean, and, and well-put-together, and, and not squalor. But that same money is the same pot of money used for the services that happen with, with, either at the encampments or at our residential facilities or shelters. And so there's a tension as to where that money should go. We need more money overall. We, we have to look at homeless prevention, the three-pronged approach, homeless prevention, our Keep Oakland House program needs to be expanded, crisis management, the short-term at the homeless encampments, and most importantly, of course, long-term housing, including for extremely low-income housing, and I'm proud of the fact that we are gonna be purchasing, and I helped push this through, purchasing a dormitory from the California College of the Arts to house homeless families and homeless seniors. Thank you so much.
I know it's tough to tackle homelessness in a minute and a half, so thank you for your valiant efforts here. So the good news is, we have a similar related question, so you can, you know, continue along this vein, but it's, the thing I love about our neighborhood is that when we ask what is of concern to people, we get a lot of questions. People really want to know how we're going to help our most vulnerable residents, which I love about our community. So it's, it's on a similar vein. This next question, several questions came around the same theme. What is your vision of equity? It's a very general question. What is your vision of equity for Oakland, and what concrete policy actions do you plan to take in order to advance that vision? And then another one, similar related question is, you know, with all the hardships of 2020, how will you serve the most underserved in our neighborhood? And why don't we start with, we'll start with Dan this time, if that's all right.
There it goes. Okay, thank you. Yes, so what's, what is our vision, each of us, our vision of equity when it comes to the city, city efforts? What's the second part of that question again?
And how will you help to serve the most underserved in our neighborhood?
Okay, well, multifaceted question. I'm, I very much support our Department of Racial Equity, it only has a few staff people, but one of the things that they did is a great example, they were extremely engaged with other stakeholders and, and from, from day one on a new Equitable Climate Action Plan that we now have for the city. And I, I was the councilmember who took the lead on helping that through, although it very much was a community-oriented effort, including our staff, and I really appreciate the work that they all did. So, and Racial Equity Department was part of that, so I strongly support that. Implementing that has to be done using the Racial Equity Implementation Guide, so we can't, we have to be true to the goals. Two, I've been a strong supporter of libraries, and I always call libraries the great equalizers in our society. So I, I'm proud of the work we've done on libraries, I even received an award by a statewide library, library organization, but we have to make sure we don't cut funding for libraries, because they provide a lot of tools for people of all backgrounds and all income levels. And then three, well, actually, well beyond three, but we have to make sure that we're providing protections for our lowest-income renters, and I've been a leader when it comes to our ten protection ordinance, Just Cause, our rent protection policies and ordinances, I authored many of those or co-authored some of them, and we have to continue to do what we can to prevent displacement, especially for our lower and, and moderate-income renters. We can't have more people kicked out. Displacement is key, and that would be a priority function for me. I want to continue to work with Racial Equity when it comes to all sorts of issues, whether it's cannabis, libraries, housing, homelessness, you name it, there's a lot of what we need to do, and we need to be respectful of this effort, including the police commission and the reimagining task force. Thank you.
Great, well done. And our next speaker on that question is going to be Try.
Equity, what does it mean to me? Equity is equality in our society, that's what it means to me. We don't all have the same amount of money, we don't all look the same, but what it means to me is everyone has the same chances in our society. And where we're failing is that we live in a democracy where money is distorting representation, and that's why we haven't been protecting our most vulnerable. And so, number one, our homeless are, are most vulnerable, and I would support those living in encampments with infrastructure and sanitation, I would provide transition options to semi-permanent housing, I would make sure that our, those living in encampments have a sense of community so that they're supported, that they're treated with compassion, they're treated like a resident, because they are. I, you know, many of those living in encampments are, I mean, many of our houseless are black, and we've been talking about Black Lives Matter, and, you know, here is another example of society not being equitable. Once folks have been put in semi-permanent housing, like a tiny house or a tough shed, we would proactively coordinate with nonprofit and private organizations, and I would ensure that houseless residents have a period of two years so that they can transition into permanent housing. People need to be given a reasonable chance.
Great, thank you, perfect timing. And Steph?
So I'm already working to promote equity and working with members of our community who have nothing. And I learned that many children were going hungry in District One a few years ago when I started volunteering at Piedmont Avenue Elementary. Five-year-olds going home with nothing in their bellies and no, and, and, and five-year-olds all the way up to fifth grade at the school where I was, and I just, I, it was not acceptable to me. I started a supper program by getting the support of restaurant owners in District One to create a wholesome meal. I rallied a bunch of volunteers, just people like us from this district, who wanted to do a sit-down dinner service for children to create a sense of community, to let these children, who predominantly are black and brown and from immigrant families, to tell them that they matter, and to bring community leaders into the room to read to them and give them an experience that they could look forward to, and an opportunity to go home and have a full belly and do their homework, and have positive interactions with their siblings, and give their parents a moment to, to take a breath and say, I can cross that worry off my list. We are not doing enough for our communities of color, they are struggling, it's getting harder, rent is gonna be due, we need to step up, we cannot just have plans. Plans are great, but if there's no action, what's the use? And I'm gonna, I'm a person of action, I'm a person who makes change happen. Thank you, I'm stopping.
Good, great. Okay, thank you so much. You're all doing great, this is awesome. I can't, can't we elect all of you? Can you work together as a team?
Yes.
So, this is a question, just a bare bones question about blight. What can we do about blight in general and around homeless camps specifically? What actions will you take to reduce blight and dumping? And then there's a specific question about on Lowell Street between Stanford and 53rd, but you know, we all see this, you know, as you walk in the underpass, 45th, 42nd, 40th. And then there's a question about Measure RR, if you can speak to that, which would remove fine limits for illegal dumping and code violations that disproportionately impact low-income and older residents. So if you have any thoughts on Measure RR, if you have any thoughts on blight, and how can we reduce blight? Why don't we start with Steph?
The blight problem is out of control. And, and to Kathy's point earlier, it's not just horrible for the quality of life for the people who are having to live among the blight, amongst the blight, but it's terrible for our neighborhoods, and I, we need a plan in the city to get it cleaned up. And I, I referenced the giraffe encampment a little bit earlier, but every Monday and Thursday, I watch it grow, like it's, it's visible, I can see it every single time I drive by, it's getting worse. That's unacceptable, it's unacceptable. If we can't put people, if we can't provide housing for the people who have to live in the blight, we need to clean the blight up. And for the folks who, who live in the surrounding areas, it's gotta go for them as well. There was a second part to the question, oh, limiting the fines on people who are low-income, yeah, I mean, let's help them get it cleaned up. If somebody wants to get rid of some trash, like, we should be able to help them do that. Imposing fines, time and again, on somebody who doesn't have any money in the first place is, is adding to a problem, as, as far as I can tell. So I'm gonna, I'll, I'll cede the rest of my time. Okay.
Great, all right, that is allowed. Okay, try, so we hear from Try.
Yeah, regarding blight, well, let's start with RR. I, I do support lifting the limit, I think it provides us with more tools to enforce the things we want to see. One thing I would enforce is no more vacant properties. I would, I would heavily find vacant properties. We cannot have houseless residents and walk down the street wondering, why is this, why is this vacant? I, you know, our, our policies don't match what our people need right now, and so I, I would support RR in terms of blight, again, it's, there's a blight in, when we have vacant property, that's, that encourages blight, because people aren't living there, they can't, they can't take care of it. So, number one, figure out a way to convert vacant properties over to, if it's a vacant piece of land, make that an encampment, if, and support it, you know, officially, not just say it, but actually provide sanitation and internet access. Try, you know, create a sense of community. If it's a house, then figure out how to, figure out how to make sure that someone's living there. I, I would support increasing fines over time so that our actions have teeth. There should not be vacant property in Oakland, and that leads to blight, and especially and especially during this housing crisis.
Thank you. And Dan?
Thank you. Yeah, first on RR, as you know, I was the author of Measure RR, which the council put on the ballot unanimously. And I'm very proud of that. I appreciate the work that Angela and many others in the, in the North Oakland have done over the past, if not months, years maybe, in pushing that, that forward. And we think that's one of the prongs of the solution we need to deal with a particular but broader range of challenges that we're having with, I won't get into any one company right now, but with certain situations that require strong measures and a stronger toolbox. At the same time, the goal of Measure RR is to deal with illegal dumping, blight, you know, large, big actors who are abusing the system and not being held accountable because of the limits we have in our toolbox. And this is to create a stronger toolbox for the city. But when it comes to smaller transgressions or ones by low income people, either laws already exist to limit those fines or we can put those laws into place. Lifting Measure RR doesn't cause us to do anything that would be harmful to anybody else. It gives us a tool for the big actors, the major violators. That's what we, that's what we need. In terms of blight, there's blight at homeless encampments and there's blight at other places other than homeless encampments. If it's not at a homeless encampment and it's a property owner who could afford to take care of it, we need to be hard-nosed about it and make sure they are taking care of it. If it's at a homeless encampment, that's what I talked about earlier. We need to have more regular trash collection, more deep cleanings on a more regular basis. And of course, the porta potty servicing at the encampments as well. And we need to put more funds into that. I got some more funds into that in the last budget revised. It's not enough. And so we need to up that game significantly and that's my goal.
Great. Thank you so much. And Kathy, do you want to do the next question?
Yes, thank you. There's been a lot of talk on Next Door about accountability with respect to our city leaders, city staff, everybody over at City Hall, including our councilperson, sorry, Dan. There's a lot of, a lot of chatter about this. And you know, District One is probably one of the more vocal districts out of all the districts. I know people all over Oakland and we probably are the most vocal. So do you agree there's a major accountability problem with city government? And how will you effectively address communication with your constituents? And not just when it's time for, during election year, but throughout the four years that you're in office? How are you gonna start communicating with, with, with your constituents? Because we're doing, we're doing work. We're doing, doing work here in the city and we'd like to be responded to. So that's to each of you, starting with candidate Try. Thank you.
I believe I'm the only candidate where you can go on my website and schedule a meeting with me. Last time I checked. And I've had two of those meetings today. And we need to lower the barriers to engagement in order to increase accountability. And we need to increase trust because when people don't trust their leaders to represent them, they disengage because they're like, nah, I don't want to deal with that. I don't want, I don't trust what they're saying, so I'm not gonna pay attention. When eyes turn away from government, we lose accountability. So that's why I have a $35 limit. I want increasing eyes on me and on Oakland government in order to restore accountability. We have a chance here to transform local government. It's, you know, and it's, we have a chance and this is the time for it. This is absolutely the time for it. I also support having an online voting platform. I will create an online voting platform so that you can vote on my votes. When you know that your vote counts towards my decisions, then that increases your engagement and that will also increase accountability. You know, when you hire someone for a job, you don't leave them for four years and not look at them. That's a recipe for disaster. Thank you.
Councilperson call, please.
Okay, thank you for that important question. Appreciate it. The job of me and or any council member, any district is to serve the best they can, their entire constituency. And that's almost 60,000 people now, not quite, but nearly, nearly that. That's a lot of people. And some, some subset of those people, I don't know how big or small, it varies from year to year, from month to month, will be on an ongoing basis or intermittent basis, contact the city, the council member office, we email or phone call or what have you, mostly email, what have you. And that we have to do the best we can to respond to that. But while we're responding to that, to the individual or the small group request or need or complaint or concern or problem in a neighborhood or a block, what have you, we can't forget the overall responsibility of the entire district and in some extent, the entire city. You have to have a right balance. And that's what we try to do. We don't always succeed. I will acknowledge that there were some years in, on and off for a part of my, not past couple of years, but prior to that, where we did not get back to everybody on a regular basis. And there was a whole sorts of reasons beyond that, but I take responsibility for that in terms of staffing issues and so on. But a little less than two years ago, about two years ago, actually now, we changed that. And we have much more, better focus on getting back to people. It's not 100% perfect and never will be ever. We all know that. But we've been a lot better job in getting back to people, trying to resolve the problems. We can't resolve every individual issue, but we can make that effort and we try to do that the best we can, even though it's not perfect. At the same time, looking at the broader citywide or district-wide issues that are still in play and we can't ignore the 60,000 people, even though there are several hundred who might contact us, contact us on a regular basis. It's, you have to find the right balance and that's what we try to do. And I want to thank my staff for their hard work.
Candidate Walton? If it's only several hundred, then this is gonna be a breeze for me as your, as your next council member. I have been on this campaign since the beginning of 2019. I started officially reaching out to people in, in the neighborhood with my candidacy last summer. And I talked to, I've talked to hundreds of people since the beginning of the year, hundreds of people in COVID. People write to me through the website. They call me on the campaign phone. And I get back to every single person who reaches out. So if it's a couple hundred that we really need to deal with on a regular basis out of 60,000, like I got this. But the, the thing is, people feel in this district, and I, I'll ask those of you who are on this call, are you feeling represented? Are you getting a response to 1-2-5-7 emails, phone calls? I hear from folks that there is a lack of responsiveness and that's a problem because we are in an unprecedented crisis at this moment with housing, with our unhoused, with all of the things that we've highlighted, with our, our roads and whether or not business owners are being consulted and asked, how can we help lift you up through this pandemic? How can we make this easy for you as the economic engine that fuels our city? Like, people want to be heard. And, and I'm doing that. And that is the absolute cornerstone of this campaign. Right on time.
Nice work. Okay, I'm gonna jump to a question that is near and dear to my heart. It's about transportation. I'm gonna read you a few different questions that we got and you can answer them as you see fit. So our neighborhood is incredibly car-centric with many sidewalks too narrow to even walk on for an able-bodied pedestrian. How can we make our community more friendly to transit, walking and biking? Another question on that same vein is, what will you do to support increased safety for pedestrians and bicyclists and the economic recovery of small businesses? Another one is San Pablo Ave will be redesigned in the not-so-distant future. Would you support reducing automobile traffic lanes and parking in order to facilitate bus rapid transit and bike lanes? And then there's a question about speed bumps on 41st Street. How do we get people to stop zooming along on Market and West Streets, especially during morning and evening rush hours? So that's a grab bag of transportation issues for you to address. And why don't we start with Dan, please?
Okay, I did not write, oh, I tried to write everything down, it was so quick, I couldn't get it all down.
I'm sorry. I know. I, I, there were a bunch there. So they're all.
That's right. Let me try to do the best I can. I, as many people know, I've been a strong supporter of road diets and of more bike lanes and more pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods and shopping districts. And I will continue to do that, even though sometimes some people don't like that. And I, and I get that. Some people are used to the way, the way things have been for a long time and they, they fear, they fear certain change or they think it might have a bad impact. And I think, and I listen to those people time and time again and meet with them and make sure our DOT or other departments meet with them as well. But ultimately, I have to support what I think is right. And I think what is right to do is being in the 21st century and making sure that we have pedestrian safety as a top priority when it comes to infrastructure. And I want to facilitate that. And I push for more bike lanes, safe bike lanes, pedestrian safety improvements, road diets on many of our streets and even stop signs. And of course, I'm a big fan of, of speed bumps on the side streets. And I, so I support more speed bumps and I always have. And so if my office can help facilitate those individual situations, as we often do, we're happy to do that. I think you also asked about San Pablo Corridor. Yes, I, I'm actually, even though I'm no longer on the Almedic County Transportation Commission, I am an alternate and I'm assigned to be on that, that process, the San Pablo Corridor process. So I do represent the city on that. And yes, I do support that effort. It's not yet done. It's, the planning is still underway. But I think there's a great opportunity to reimagine the San Pablo Corridor throughout the entire corridor from downtown Oakland all the way up to Pastel Cerrito into Richmond. And so it's gonna be a tricky effort. We have to do it in a careful way that involves the merchants, making sure we don't lose our loading zones. I strongly support more loading zones or make sure we don't lose those. And I will continue to work with the community as they have in the past. So yes, thank you.
Oops, I'm muted. I did it. Somebody has to be that person. That was me. Okay, thank you so much. And why don't we hear from Steph?
Okay, I'm, the Telegraph repave and redo is, is on my mind a lot lately because it's fresh and it's new. And I got to watch it because I go to San Kofa Elementary on Monday and Thursday morning. I pick up my food deliveries and then I come and cruise up Telegraph. And I remember talking to, before it was, it was done, I talked to a lot of members of the community, both residents, people who travel or work in the area and people who, who run businesses there. And the general consensus was, you know, people resist change, of course, and it's, it's scary. Taking away parking spaces in front of a person's place of business could potentially affect their, their livelihood, right? It's COVID right now and, and folks were really confused. Prior to, I remember talking to a merchant right on the corner of 51st and Telegraph, prolific food provider in the area. And she, I said, where are the delivery trucks gonna be parked? And she couldn't answer the question. And it was like three weeks before the repave. And so communication is key. And people do, are going to resist change. I resist change from time to time. But I want, I want people to be able to safely travel our streets, not just in District One, but all over the city. I want reliable bus service that's safe and rapid and affordable for all members of our community so that we can really push all of this. You know, if you're living in Oakland and working in Oakland, you need to get around in Oakland. You've got a variety of ways to do it that are also taking into consideration our climate. So, okay, I just got the stop.
Sorry, I know it's short. Thank you so much. You're all good. And Try, let's talk about transportation.
Yeah, let's talk about it. So in the long term, we need to move away from internal combustion engines. Global war, I worked for Tesla for four years. I'm committed to solving the climate crisis. And as you see, our climate is changing and we need to solve this. We, we need to be leaders in this. One-third of carbon emissions comes from automobiles. So that's, if we're gonna solve this, we need to transition away from, from burning gas. And also, in the long term, we need to create more housing, which will increase our density. And so we need to provide transportation that will support higher density housing. And a bike is much higher density transportation than a car. At the same time, in East Oakland, for example, when, with the implementation, implementation of the slow streets, minorities felt unheard. And we need to make sure that we proactively reach out to minority communities to ensure that their voice is heard because when you leave people behind, that will result in less political power, which will then prevent us from solving homelessness. That's pretty much the impact of it. So we cannot leave people behind in our decision-making. I do support making the slow streets program permanent. I think that would increase safety of our streets and provide more outdoor space for children. I support that road diet on San Pablo. I do like protected bike lanes. I bike all the time. But again, that's the long term and we need to keep the community, all of the community, abreast of our actions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So Jean, I think you forgot one question, which I think is, is, we really need to ask. And I'll ask it out loud and we can make a decision right quick. What is your legislative agenda for the first year after the election? And do you think that interested residents should play a role in shaping that agenda? So let's start with the councilperson call, please. Your legislative agenda for the first year after the election?
Thank you for that. It's gonna focus on some of the same categories of things that I focused on before. Is protecting renters from displacement, getting more affordable housing, either preserved, protected or built, or getting the funding available to do that. I also want to continue the work I've done in a much bigger fashion in terms of youth partnerships. I created a partnership with OUSD to reduce chronic absenteeism in elementary schools. It's only a pilot program for the past few years. We need to up that the best we can. OUSD needs our help. We can't be, we can't just say, oh, OUSD is separate. No, it has to be part of us as a, as a partnership. So that's, that's an effort. A lot of things we have to need to work on, police accountability, implementing Measure S1, of course, is very important. And we have a whole work underway in terms of our upcoming budget. Next, next spring and into the early summer, it will be a major two-year budget decision. And the first part of next year, we are gonna be focused a lot of our time on dealing with budget questions, working with the community, with the mayor's office, with our colleagues, talking to people and trying to decide what, what do we prioritize in our next budget, given that we're gonna have challenges and where are our new revenue sources to find? So housing, homelessness, police oversight, public safety, crime prevention, all those things have to continue to be a top priority for all of us. And that's what I've worked on over the past several years. I have a strong legislative accomplishment record, a record. I'm very proud of that, but there's a lot more to do. I'm not gonna give up now. We have four more years to work on this.
Okay, I did want to know how interested residents could play a role in shaping the agenda. So.
Yes. I think I had, I had 10 more seconds. Amazing. So I did start to say that, absolutely. You know, I have, I have town hall meetings, community meetings. Not, not only do I sponsor town hall meetings from time to time, but I like to or send my staff to go, but I go sometimes as well, to the existing meetings, whether it's the Piedmont Avenue Neighborhood Improvement League or LCA having their periodic meeting. I want to go to those meetings as much as I can and help be at least partly on the agenda. I don't want to take over the meeting, but partly on the agenda to get that feedback. But that's, that's always imperfect. So getting feedback, getting input, getting a help assistance. You're never gonna engage 60,000 people, but if I could engage a representative sampling of people across the district, that's a good thing.
Okay, we'll be looking for you, Dan. Also, okay, the next candidate is, to answer this question, would be candidate Try. Thank you.
My legislative agenda in the first year would be to solve homelessness, to create affordable housing, preserving Oakland's diversity and to reimagine policing as many residents have told me they are not satisfied with it. And we want to focus on prevention and not just be punitive. And to answer your question about how can, how can members, how can residents be a part of this? They can do that by logging on to a portal that I am creating, an online voting system so that they can vote on the measures that I'm voting on. I need your, I need to know that you're supporting this in order to, to have the political power to push it through. We will, I want to deploy that system Oakland-wide because these votes are Oakland-wide. And so participation is critical to the legislative agenda that I'll have in my first year. I want to create the space that promotes leadership in communities so that leadership is not, you know, it's, it takes courage and we need to support it wherever it exists. And so I'm not someone to do it, to go alone on these things. That doesn't do anything. My focus, though, is on solving the homelessness problem. I think in addressing that problem effectively, we will address other problems we see.
Candidate Walton, thank you. Sure. So I think. Sure. So I think, um, revisiting zoning for multifamily housing and making sure that people are not displaced when new housing is built must be taken into consideration. That will be number one, side by side, uh, reimagining policing. I think when we reallocate those police funds in a smart way, um, we can really truly reimagine the city with housing and with policing. Um, too many people are going without. Too many people don't have opportunity. There are, you know, working with families at Piedmont Avenue Elementary, which I, I, I talk about a lot because it's a big part of my life and it has shaped the way I look at, uh, how I will be, uh, uh, serving on the council. Um, people with very little means are doing everything they possibly can just to, just to stay afloat. And if, if the city can provide opportunity where better jobs are concerned, job training, you know, if we're really talking about taking a large portion of our, of our police budget and putting it into the community, let's create jobs for people. Let's really promote equity and education. Let's work hand in hand with the new school board member that's coming into District One and make sure kids are not going without. During COVID, for the first three months of the pandemic, I delivered food to families who do not have access otherwise. And I watched children get zero education from March to the end of the school year. That's not going to happen on my watch. It's not good enough and it does not promote uplifting all members of our community. And I'm going to engage all of you guys. I'm going to call you all and I'm going to pick up the phone and I'm going to answer the calls.
All right, everyone. Thank you. This is great. We're gonna, we're gonna do, our last question is our, your closing statement. This is your chance to say, why should we vote for you? What makes you better and different than the other candidates? And this is your final last hurrah. So we'll start with Try, then we'll go Steph and we'll go Dan. And then we will pivot to the last final part of our agenda. So.
Two minutes, Jean?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay.
Thank you so much, everyone, for having me. Um, I'm so grateful that you guys care. That's, that's why I love Oakland. There's a strong sense of community, which I will protect. We have a chance here to reimagine government in the way that a democracy should be, a way that enables the participation of all of our residents so that we can take action effectively and hold government accountable. We can be a leader in democracy for the entire country. We have that opportunity and it's essential to do this in order to solve persistent issues such as homelessness, affordable housing and reimagining public safety. I have a different background, um, from the other candidates. I was born in a refugee camp, grew up in inner-city Philadelphia and Atlanta on welfare. Took care of an older brother with cerebral palsy growing up, went to public schools all my life, um, went to, I eventually got into MIT. I'm a, I'm an electrical engineer. And then I got my PhD at, uh, Johns Hopkins in biomedical engineering. And then I worked for Tesla for four years. I'm not a normal politician. I'm not here for politics. I'm here to solve problems. And I would love the opportunity to solve those problems with you and, and revolutionize local government. We have the opportunity here. So having said that, I'd like to invite you guys to come see me this Sunday at Arthur Mac for some free pizza, starting at noon. And also, uh, next week, we have a virtual town hall on, um, uh, solving homelessness and creating housing for all. Um, we'll have guest speakers there who will provide, um, their experiences. I don't have all the answers. Uh, my job is to create the space for collaboration and, um, an urgency towards solving problems. And I, yeah, I, I love you guys. Appreciate you very much. Um, please, uh, donate to the campaign that will move us towards a more accountable government.
Thank you, Try. And let's go with Steph.
Okay. So first of all, I really love that Try just said he loved you guys because I think that is, we need to say that kind of stuff to each other more often. And I know he's sincere and I do too. And I love this community. And I have loved getting to know so many of you over the course of this campaign. Um, and my heart is here. You know, I'm, I'm doing this. You know, I decided to run for city council the day after, uh, Trump stole that election from Hillary Clinton. You know, I knew that we were host. I knew that we were gonna, that we were gonna have to really lean on our local government to make sure we were getting what we need. And, and the status quo is not getting it done for us right now. Uh, we need a change. We need a responsive leader who is going to collaborate with you, who is going to ask you what it is you need to listen to your voice and to figure out how we make these changes happen together. Cause this is a change, this is a change election. We are in a time of change, like we get to redo this whole thing. And I want to invite, I, I would love to partner with you to, to make some of that amazing change happen because I, there is, uh, I do see a light at the end of the tunnel if we all work together. I want to invite everybody here to, um, next Tuesday night, I'm, I'm interviewing, um, Obama's former Housing and Urban Development Secretary and presidential candidate, Julian Castro. Um, he, he wrote the policies on police reform that everybody's talking about now. And he's been talking about that stuff for years. He's run a major city. Um, he ran for president. He gets what we need and what we should be asking for from our feds and from our state. And he can talk about housing and that's what we're going to engage him on. And so that's next Tuesday night, September 22nd at five o'clock. It's all over Facebook, but I can also, um, uh, show you how to get in touch there. But I, I, I look forward to working with you and to really, um, making Oakland the greatest, uh, possible city that it can be. So thanks so much. I'll put my info in the chat.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Am I up?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all for organizing this. Uh, and I, I will send my love to everybody as well, as I often do. I appreciate that very much. And, and you know, I mean, no one runs for office, uh, at a local level or any level if they don't really love the work they're going to be doing. And I do that, that this work. Uh, it's, it's, it's not exciting. It's not always fun, but, um, this, you know, you don't do this kind of job for the fun of it. You do it because you want to accomplish things. And that's what I'm, I've been a public service advocate, a community activist for my entire adult life. Uh, so this is not new for me. Uh, and after I got elected to office, I didn't stop there. Some people go into office not having that kind of public interest advocacy, um, orientation. And I did, and I will continue to do that. Uh, I, I will be a strong worker, a hard worker, uh, work very difficult, work on the tough issues that, that we care about as I have in the past. I have the policy making experience and government budget experience, not just as a council member, but even before I ran for council, I had that experience. And that's helped me become a successful council member. And that's very, very crucial if you want to have someone to do a really awesome job. I'm proud of my record when it comes to securing more funding for affordable housing, protecting tenants from displacement, police accountability, public safety, crime prevention, climate justice, clean energy, pedestrian safeties, libraries, and so much more. I will continue to work on the issues that we all care about, uh, whether they're small issues, uh, smaller case issues in, in our neighborhoods or citywide or regional issues that seem bigger, but they're all very important. I will continue to work hard as I have been day in and day out. People who know me well know how hard it works and they know that, that the accomplishments I have. In fact, just a few years ago, uh, Oakland Magazine said I was the most effective member of the Oakland City Council by, by getting a lot of things done. I realize there's more to do and no, no one's perfect. We have a lot of, a lot to accomplish together. Uh, but I will continue to, to try to find a good balance between, uh, the district level, the neighborhood level, the constituent level, concerns and requests and complaints and needs and the citywide responsibilities and budget responsibilities that we must take advantage of, which is our core responsibility as well. Uh, I will work hard for you as I always do. I hope you give me that chance. I'm, I'm proud of my endorsements. Please go to, go to my website, dancallb.net and look at the endorsement page. I'm very proud of that. I hope you can do that. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I want to thank all 44 residents of our neighborhoods for coming tonight. This is a huge turnout and this is civic engagement right here. People taking their night to, to listen to this and to communicate, to participate. So what, what a wonderful turnout. And I want to thank the, um, our, our council member and our candidates for stepping up to run for office and to serve our community. Um, we really appreciate this work. It's hard. This grueling, this is a grueling campaign. And, um, you know, you guys are doing amazing work. So thank you so much for coming tonight and for, for participating in this forum. And, um, we will turn it over to Scott, who is going to give a few announcements about Longfellow Community Association upcoming events. And then we will close out.
Jean, do you mind, I have to run. But I'd like to say something. I just want to thank everyone, um, for coming from the neighborhood. Um, I'd like to thank my co-host, Jean Walsh with LCA, Angela Janino with, um, the Golden Gate Community Association. Um, all of you who are running for District One, you know, this is my hometown. I love this city. I'm going to hold you accountable. So, you know, you know me.
Yes.
Angela and I are going to do another forum because there were some questions in the chat that didn't get answered and we apologize to that, to you neighbors, because we couldn't get everyone's questions. But there is going to be another forum where you will have an, an opportunity to submit your questions and we'll try to make sure that they're all answered. So thank you all very much. I really appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thanks. And speaking of additional forums, I also just want to let everyone know before you, you depart, um, uh, LCA will be hosting our second, uh, election forum of the season. It's part of our October meeting and that's going to be, um, again, we're adapting to the, to the COVID world. Um, we are going to be joined by a representative of the League of Women Voters and that's going to be focused on a, a presentation about the ballot measures. So there's been so much going on with the presidential election, city council, and that gets all the attention right now. And, um, especially with, without as many yard signs out there. I feel like I don't even know what some of the, uh, the ballot measures are this, this year. So we're going to get a rundown, um, from the League of Women Voters on what they are, nonpartisan rundown. So we appreciate all of those of you who wish to join us. Um, take a look at, uh, longfellowoakland.org. Um, and there's a link to, uh, where you can sign up, um, for that. Um, but in the meantime, we also have a, an event coming up, um, that may interest you and, and our neighbors from other neighbor, neighborhoods are welcome to attend all of these. Um, we have a, a really exciting presentation that's going to be followed by a, a facilitated discussion, um, called Confronting Racist Profiling. This is something that, that LCA is hosting, but it's really being, uh, put together by an organization called, uh, Neighbors for Racial Justice, um, which is a group of primarily white women, um, here in North Oakland, um, that have come together to address issues related to racial justice, um, with, uh, an advisory council, uh, of, of, uh, black members of the community as well, sort of supporting them and, and helping us all develop a greater understanding of our role in, um, in confronting racism. Um, so that's going to be on Saturday, the 26th. Uh, again, check out our website or our Facebook page. Um, registration is required for that one. So make sure that you please register and you'll get a personalized link to join us. So that's, uh, that's it for announcements. Jean, did I leave anything out? Oh, you know what? Yes, one thing. Sorry. Um, as many of you saw, this, this, uh, session has been recorded. Uh, we haven't quite figured out how we're going to distribute it yet, but that is the plan. Um, some of you have asked me in the chat privately as the host, um, if you will get a copy of the chat and we're happy to make that transcript available as well. Um, so stay tuned on that. More details to follow. We'll make sure it gets to Kathy and Angela. So if you're not and are already subscribed to the LCA world, um, they'll help get us out, get the information out to everyone who's interested.
And it looks like we have three minutes to spare. This makes me very happy. Uh, thank you to everyone. Um, we'll be in touch and happy election season and hope to see all of you at an upcoming neighborhood association, whether it's Golden Gate, Santa Fe, or Longfellow. And have a lovely night.
And good luck to you, candidate Walsh.